Please be seated. At this time, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions to those around you. And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda is program and presentation and a student performance, as you can see, by the district-wide high school choir. Ms. Johnston?
The AISD has a rich and successful choral tradition. Our groups have represented the district from San Antonio as invited on our choirs at the Texas Music Educators Association to New York's Carnegie Hall. This evening, we will be treated to a district-wide high school choir performing to the cherubim and seraphim by Handel.
I'm here with competition.
To the cherubim and seraphim, continually, continually, continually do cry. To the cherubim and seraphim, continually, continually, continually do cry. Holy, holy, continually, 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 continually do cry. 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 To the cherubim and seraphim, continually, continually, continually do cry, do cry. Continually, 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 continually do cry. Oh, 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 Lord God of Sabbath. When I dance, my God of majesty, oh thy glory, oh thy glory, oh thy glory. Oh, oh majesty, oh thy glory.
Thank you very much. That was phenomenal. Thank you so, so much. Beautiful, beautiful. If we had our choice, we'd just sit here and listen to you all night, but we have other things to do. Great job. And thank you to our amazing fine arts directors in the back of the room. Thank you guys so much for all you do. And I guess I'll do a quick shout out to Ms. Toni Worley, another one of our choir directors. Her birthday is today, so happy birthday, Toni. I'm sure you're watching as part of your birthday celebration. All right. Next on our agenda is the Student of the Month. This month, we will focus on the Arlington Collegiate High School. And if we could have Dr. Ben Boland, please come on down.
President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos, thank you for this opportunity to introduce one of the many outstanding students from Arlington Collegiate High School. We're very excited to talk about this young lady who is this year's recipient for the Student of the Month for ACHS, and that is Samantha Velazquez. And before I introduce her, I want to thank several of the staff members here from Arlington Collegiate High School. Many of her teachers are here in the back. Showed up to support her and Assistant Principal Jeff Krieger. And her former junior high principal, Mr. Lizardo, is here as well. So Samantha attended Carter Junior High, and in eighth grade, she decided to apply to ACHS because she wanted to have a better opportunity than her parents did and to also be someone who sets a good example for younger siblings. Since then, Samantha has become the most advanced sophomore in the history of ACHS. So going back to junior high, she earned college credit in Spanish from passing the AP Spanish exam. In ninth grade, she earned six college credit hours. And this semester, she is currently enrolled in 12 college credit hours. That's in addition to her high school courses. Her college courses this semester include dual-credit US History, dual-credit Sociology, dual-credit Federal Government, and the Gateway Course Dual-Credit College Algebra, which I think she's making 100 in right now. Next semester, Samantha will be enrolled in 10 college credit hours, which means she could possibly acquire 32 college credit hours, all before she enters 11th grade. More important than her academic success, Samantha was chosen to receive this award because of her outstanding character, and she was chosen by her teachers. Her teachers stated that she is honest, very positive, possesses great integrity, remains humble, is always willing to help others, and is dedicated to putting in the hard work required to achieve excellence. In the future, Samantha wants to major in psychology, although her math teacher and I are kind of working on the math part of it, so maybe psychological statistics or something like that, because she's really strong at math. And she's interested in attending Columbia University, New York University, or the University of Texas at San Antonio. Any one of these universities would be lucky to have her, and we can't wait to see all of the great things she will accomplish. So congratulations, Samantha. We're very proud of you.
Hi.
Wow. Very, very impressive. My gosh. I'm speechless over your level of activity with all of those college credit hours already. So this is your time to say whatever you want. What you might think of doing, I know Dr. Boland mentioned as far as universities and your choices, and he kind of said, well, maybe math as well. But as well as if there's anybody here or watching that you'd like to acknowledge.
I want to thank my parents, because for them, I am here, and for their support and all of my family's support. Yeah. And my teachers for pushing me to be the student that I am.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you so much. It is a really a distinct honor. There's seven, seven high schools, yours included, and you're the only one that's going to get this acknowledgement out of that high school this entire year. It's very special, very, very rare, out of the entire district of 64-plus thousand children. You're one of seven that receive these kind of accolades. So congratulations on that. Best of luck to you as you move on into the junior year. Oh, my gosh. The things that you've already done, we hear about our seniors doing maybe some of those things. So for you to do it at this early age, just keep shining bright. Don't burn out. Just keep on loving, learning.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for being here. And do we have, okay, if you'd stay right there, we want to come down and acknowledge something else with you. Can I have to ask where your parents here?
Yeah.
Oh. So could you please stand, and we can all acknowledge you as well? So I know Spence always likes us to be on the mic here. So we have a couple of tokens of appreciation. One is this pin that you see, myself and Dr. Kavasos and all trustees, these are our pins that we wear. You can take this pin, please, and use it however you see fit. Wear it every single day, or put it somewhere on the middle of a wall as a display, whatever you want to do with it. It's just, it's a very special thing from us to you. So thank you.
We have this plaque here, the student recognition for you, Samantha. So congratulations. Keep up the great work. This is yours, and we'll take a picture.
Yeah, come on over here, please. How about Mom and Dad? Why don't you come on up here? You deserve this. Thank you so much for going through the process of applying and getting her into the collegiate program and for your obvious support. Please. Where do you want me, Spence? That's good?
This is perfect. The one from Chris.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So next on our agenda is to introduce the new newly-elected District Level Instructional Design Making Committee, DIDC, members. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to recognize, introduce, and most importantly, thank our DIDC members who have volunteered and gotten elected to serve in this very important committee for our district. So I'll have Dr. Wertz introduce them, and thank you ahead of time.
Good evening, Dr. Reich, and school board members and Dr. Kavasos. I'm here this evening to introduce our newly-elected District Level Instructional Decision-Making Committee members. Back in the early 1990s, to comply with Education Code Section 11.251, the district established the District Level Instructional Decision-Making Committee, known as the DIDC, to advise the board or its designee in establishing and reviewing the district's educational plans, goals, performance objectives, and any major instructional classroom programs, and also in helping us to develop and approve district-wide professional learning plans. The district's site-based decision-making body consists of teachers, principals, campus-based non-administrative professional staff members, community members, parents, and district-level professional staff members. The committee has four regular meetings that take place each year, and all are, we call meetings additionally besides the four as needed. At this time, we have some new committee members for the 17, 18 school year that we're able to introduce here this evening. We have some that were not able to be here tonight. I'd like to call out their names, and then I would like to invite those that are here in the audience to please stand when your name is called so that you can be recognized. Not with us this night, but we want to recognize this Katherine Shields, Kristen Clark, Corey Davis, Amber Price, Lori Mayfield, and Jerry, I can't pronounce this last name, Picken Medlin, I think is how you say it. And then those who are with us here tonight, we have Christina Blank, who is a teacher from Bowles, James Lamont from Shackleford Junior High, he's a teacher there, a librarian from Alsley, Ashley Wagner, Beth Ann Woodard, the principal at Little Elementary, Gregory Meeks, the principal at Venture High School, Michelle McIntosh at Pope Elementary as a teacher, and then Gregory Hamilton Barnett, a teacher at, yeah, Barnett Junior High. Did I miss anybody? So we're just grateful for their service. They commit a chunk of time every year to make sure that we're receiving feedback from constituents all across the district to help us make good decisions in terms of programming, professional needs for our staff and students. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for being on this committee. Really appreciate current and future work that you'll put into this. It's extremely valuable and important. So thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So we will move on to our next agenda item, which is appointments. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for assistant principal for Young Junior High.
Thank you. Move to accept an appointment?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Mrs. Hudson. Any discussion? No? All right. Well, seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Ms. Mays and Mr. Hogg are away on district-related business. Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to introduce our new assistant principal for Young Junior High, Mr. Travis Nemeth. Travis attended Texas A&amp;M University. They're not here tonight to do their thing, so I thought I'd pause anyway. Received his Bachelor of Arts in History, Texas A&amp;M University, for his Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently, an instructional coach at Gunn Junior High School, has been a social studies teacher at Turning Point High School, and has taught social studies in Cypress Fairbanks. Travis, congratulations, and anything you'd like to say?
Yes. President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos, thank you. What an honor it is to be selected to serve in this capacity for AISD. I'd like to start by just thanking God who orchestrates all things and is the reason that I'm here before you today for blessing me with the desire to serve young people as an educator. I'd like to start by also to thank Dr. Buell and Ms. Hastings for the opportunity to serve the students, the teachers, and the community of Young Junior High. It's evident by their success that they have strong systems in place currently to serve the instructional and emotional needs of their students, and I look forward to being a part of the strong leadership team already in place there. I'd also like to thank Juan Villarreal and Michelle Hill for opening the door to me, to AISD, when I interviewed as a classroom teacher at Turning Point High School. I never would have thought that taking that job would be a turning point in my career that would move me forward to the position I'm in currently accepting today. But I want to specifically thank Mr. Villarreal for his mentorship over the past five years. He's encouraged me to pursue and step into opportunities that were a little outside of my comfort zone, but he was also there to support me in those new roles when I was a classroom teacher, but more importantly, as an instructional coach at Gunn Junior High. His leadership has been instrumental to my development as an instructional leader over the past several years. I'd also like to thank Mr. Nathan Prang, Ms. Andrew Knox, and the rest of the staff at Gunn Junior High for allowing me to serve and lead them as their instructional coach over the past two years. I'm grateful for the relationships that I developed with teachers and staff, and I know I'll miss a lot of those faces and a lot of those students as I move on. I'm leaving Gunn Junior High a better educator than I arrived, and I think a big part of that is the staff and leadership that I was under my time there. I'd also like to thank my family, my mom, dad, and sister, for their continued support and encouragement over the course of my lifetime, from when I was a kid and wanted to change what sport I was playing every month, to when I was in college and jumped around to a few majors, and when I decided I wanted to be a teacher. They were always there to support me and encourage me. And lastly, I want to thank my wonderful, patient, and loving wife. She's been with me throughout my journey as an educator, and that's meant a lot of late nights, long weekends, and even working over Christmas and summer breaks. She's been patient when it's called for extra work beyond just the school hours, when I worked on my master's, when I worked on my admin certification program, and more recently, when I was a member of the Emerging Leaders Program. I wouldn't be here without her and her support. So again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm really excited to hit the ground running at Young and see what lies ahead. Thank you.
As is our custom, we ask that you follow Mr. Cale to the lobby for a receiving line so each of us can meet you and welcome you and congratulate you. For the audience, if you would, please let the board go first. We'd appreciate it so that we can get back to business. We'll take a brief break. To participate, we will come back at 7:30. To order. Next, let's see, we have no public hearing. Moving to our open forum for agenda items, we do not have any cards, so we will move on to action items. The first one is Consider Board of Trustees Handbook. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Reich. At this time, I would move to approve the Board of Trustees Handbook as amended and proposed.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Walton, and this is an item that we have seen that has, that we've kind of delayed over the past couple of meetings, so we've had plenty of time. Thank you to the Governance Committee chaired by Bowie and you both as members. A great deal of work has gone into it. I really appreciate the time that you've taken to make sure that it is the most up-to-date and efficient piece of material for us to govern ourselves by. So thank you guys for your work on that. I know there was a lot to it, so I really appreciate that. I don't see any lights indicating discussion, so please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. We have a Board of Trustees Handbook. Thank you. Next, Consider the Extension of the Superintendent Term Contract. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I move to approve the superintendent's contract as presented and award him a monetary performance incentive of 13.27% as set forth in paragraph 5.3 of his contract.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson, to extend the superintendent term contract. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Dr. Kavasos, thank you very much for being an incredibly strong leader in driving student performance and achievement in our district. It's a pleasure to work alongside of you, on behalf of the rest of my colleagues, as a true team of eight, doing what we can. You operationalize things with great fidelity in making substantial positive impacts for our children and our community. So thank you and look forward to the next term. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, we have number, or letter D. Consider the Termination of Construction Manager at Risk for the...
You missed C.
Oh. Thank you. Let's back that up. I crossed it off. I'm just moving on. Thank you. Letter C. Consider Resolution to Nominate a Candidate for the Chair and Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ms. Walton?
I move to approve the resolution to nominate Mike O'Donnell as candidate for the Chair and Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mike has served on this board since 2014, done an outstanding job for our district. He knows about property tax statutes and all of the things you need to know. He's communicated very well with us, and I'm pleased to be able to nominate him.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second the nomination.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Chapa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Congratulations, Mr. O'Donnell. Okay. Now, we will move to letter D. Consider the Termination of the CMR Contract on the 2014 Bond Phase III Bid Package 9 Junior High Tracks. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich. And as discussed previously, we bring this contract for termination for this project at this time.
All right. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I move that we terminate the Construction Manager at Risk contract for the 2014 construction project Phase III Bid Package 09 Junior High Tracks.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton, to terminate the CMR contract. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes. Moving right along, letter E. The Termination of CMR Contract for the 2014 Bond Phase II Bid Package III Project 10 for Starett Elementary School. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I would move that we terminate the Construction Manager at Risk contract for the 2014 Bond Construction Project Phase II Bid Package 03 Project 10 for Starett Elementary.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Ms. Hudson. I don't see any lights indicating discussion. Please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. That is terminated. All right. We'll move on to our next agenda, which is Discussion/Action Items. Letter A. Consider the Schematic Design for the Fine Arts Center. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Reich. And as the progression of our district-wide Fine Arts Center and continuing discussion, we bring tonight the schematic design for your consideration as a board. And I'll turn it over to Cindy Powell to introduce HKS.
President Reich, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. As Dr. Kavasos mentioned, this is a continuation of an ongoing project. The 2014 bond program included funding for a district-wide fine arts center. That fine arts center contains a concert hall, a theater, dance studio, visual arts studio, visual arts gallery, and other classroom spaces within the building. We came to the board on June 13th, and we presented to the board a program, or basically a compilation of the spaces that we felt were necessary to have in this facility in order to deliver the program that we intend to deliver, the instructional programming. And the board approved that program. Since that time, staff has continued to work with HKS architects on the layout of those spaces, the adjacencies. It's always a very important thing to consider as you're designing a facility. And we have come to the Board Fine Arts Center Committee, Construction Committee, and provided updates on a couple of occasions. So tonight, we have HKS architects with us this evening, and we will be presenting to the board the schematic design. And so we will ask the board to consider approving the schematic design tonight. If the board approves the schematic design, then the architects move into the more technical phase of their design work, into the phase that's known as design development. So with that, we have several individuals here from HKS this evening. We have Mark Vandervoort, Wayne Renaud, and the designer Leo Gonzalez. And so I'm going to turn this over to Mark, and then we will answer any questions you have. have.
Thank you, Cindy. Dr. Rice, board members, Dr. Kavassos, once again, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight and to share the schematic design proposal for your approval for the Fine Arts Center. We have been working diligently with the planning committees, and I think you'll see that the project has come a long way and in a good direction. Just wanted to remind everyone, the site location is in the city's entertainment district, sort of just south of AT&amp;T Stadium. It's a wonderful piece of property and has a lot of natural amenities associated with it, which, some of which you see here. The site plan is oriented to have the Fine Arts Center occupy the northwest corner of the site. We're also planning the athletics complex, and those two buildings will sort of dialogue with each other. They'll be familial to each other, with parking for each one of them sort of arranged just east of each of those two buildings, and preserving what happens to be maybe the most lush portion of the project as an arts lawn, which will be a nice park-like space, perhaps with a future amphitheater out as a centerpiece for the entire property. The eastern portion of the property is, at this time, proposed to be reserved for future development, and there may be sort of a service area for loading docks and deliveries and those kinds of things on the west side of the property. That seems to make a lot of sense. The floor plan itself, Cindy mentioned the major components, and they're labeled here, includes, the sort of largest central feature is a dedicated concert hall that has 1,250 seats. The other major performance space is a studio theater for 425 seats. There's also a rehearsal space between those that will serve well for many UIL competitions. The, those performance spaces are supported on the west side with back-of-house areas. There's also educational spaces, classrooms, visual arts labs, and so on, that wrap around the north and west side and will function as a small school within the complex. The dance studio is behind the theater, and those two functions work well together. They can support each other in many different ways. And then, there's a large pre-function area, which will be the public lobby for the building, and an art gallery that will host student exhibits or traveling exhibits, and really will be open to the pre-function space as kind of an expansion of the art gallery. On the second floor, you see that there's balconies that literally wrap around all sides of the concert hall, and it's similar in the studio theater that, and we have some renderings to show you in a minute of each of these. And the pre-function space also has some dramatic overlooks from the second floor to the first floor. So, here you see a watercolor rendering looking from the northeast corner. This would be the studio gallery with windows capturing north light with the pre-function space beyond, and root large roof forms that provide some protection and also some character, I think, for the, for the building itself. This is more of a nighttime shot, and one of the things that's been identified early on is to have the building almost glow like a lantern where you, as you approach the building, let's say for an evening performance, you can see the activities inside, you can see the vitality and the life, and it sort of just draws you in. I should have mentioned that, and you'll see it on the fly-through in a minute, we're trying to preserve, we are preserving, Ms. Polly, we are preserving this large tree, which is really, it may be the largest existing tree on the site. It's a beautiful oak tree, and we plan for that to be a feature. You can see that the lobby makes a gesture, not only to the tree but to the arts lawn beyond. This is a rendering of the concert hall, and there will be warm materials on the sidewalls. Here, you can see the sort of upper balcony and the choir loft behind the stage. This particular view shows a piano performance, and there will also be acoustically appropriate materials reflecting the sound. The concert hall is being designed to work to, for music performances without sound reinforcement. The studio theater is a more intimate space, 425 seats, and once again, we propose to bring in some warm materials on the face of the balconies and some acoustical curtaining at the top, which can be arranged in various configurations depending on the need of any given performance, and it'll be a wonderful intimate space for, again, UIL one-act plays or similar performances such as that. This is a shot of the pre-function space with the art gallery to the right and a monumental staircase leading up to the second level that serves the balcony level. And then, of course, a featured piano, it's a special technology, Steinway Spiro, Spiro Piano, that will be able to bring sort of live representations of performances that may be across the world or across the city. It's a wonderful technology, and you can see how that will be featured here in the pre-function lobby. We've done a computerized rendering beyond the watercolors, and these are sort of several views taken from that fly-through that you'll see in a minute. Here, you see an aerial view of that northeast corner. I didn't mention it, but these are the visual arts labs here, and there's also a learning stair that's kind of a common virtual learning area. All these spaces are focused on an arts, outdoor courtyard that'll be able to facilitate art projects and other outdoor student events, so it's kind of nice the way that there's a lot of spaces focusing on that. And here, you see a drop-off, bus drop-off for inclement weather. There's that big, big tree ghosted out, and you can see how the building makes a gesture toward, toward that arts lawn, and there's a plaza then planned to be between the two buildings, Hardscape Plaza. You can see that here, and that tree, again, is ghosted out, so you can see around it. So, that just kind of gives you an aerial view, and with that, we'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much for the information, the presentation, and with that music, I'm assuming that's, we'll have speakers on the outside, so the neighborhood will be hearing that when things are going on inside, right?
Sure thing.
Thank you very much. Are there trustees with questions? This is a Discussion/Action Item, so we can have discussion. I can entertain a motion, whatever the board pleases. Mrs. Walton?
Thank you, President Rice. Well, I am just so excited that we have gotten to this point and that we have been making so much wonderful forward motion on all of this. I have many people in town asking me, "Now, when is it going to be ready?" And there's a lot of anticipation out there, and I know how hard you all have been working on this, and that's wonderful. I know you have a few other projects that, you know, are happening too. I have one question that is kind of new to me. Your company is also constructing the new Ranger Stadium.
That's correct.
And so, is there any thought about trying to coordinate or artistically or material-wise, or, you know, I've just seen renderings, you know, that were in the paper of that, so it's not that close, but it's not that far away either, so is there any...
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Leo to speak to that, but I don't think that we've anticipated those two being, you know, familial. That might be something that we should...
Well, I would figure, I figured it was kind of two different parts of, you know, HKS, but what made me think about it was the, on the last page, the renderings that are far away, and you can see the whole building, and the material on the uppermost part is something new that has quite a bit of contrast, you know, to it, that was something I hadn't thought of, so I'm not, you know...
Well, again, I'm going to ask Leo to come up and speak to that. I think it was done purposefully, but why don't you just describe that?
Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Hello, hello, how are you, Leo?
The intent there was that, at the urban scale, the height of the concert hall was very visible, and so, the metal panel is planned to have a variation from a darker tone to a lighter tone, and it'll dissolve into the sky as you see it from a distance. And so, that was the strategy, and we plan, as we move into design development, to really look at what the range, what the right range is for that to not be too contrasting, if you will. There are some panels that may end up being very dark in the rendering right now, so we will be happy to bring some additional views of that.
And I realize this is all very preliminary, and, you know, the design is the main thing. The finishes will, you know, come later, you know, as far as decision-making goes, but that was my only question. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to move that back to that slide so folks can see what we're looking at. I think you are referring to the panels up here, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and I think my understanding is that those, that those will be a little, maybe a little more muted, but they will, there will be contrasting colors so that they, they create some bit of visual attraction there as well.
Well, and, yeah.
It is actually in some of the lower panels too, isn't it?
Right.
Because I saw that earlier.
Yes, but in the lower panels, we don't have the variation of the colors. I think what you're referring to might be the walls that face the, sorry, the walls that, that are the gallery front, that has masonry, that has a rhythm of varying tones of grays. So, it is familial to that, but it's a different material.
Can you go to those slides, please?
That would be right there.
That one. And as Ms. Walton stated, just for clarification, what we're looking at is Discussion/Action on the schematic design is completely separate than these materials. These are things that we'll talk about another time.
Absolutely. As we move forward, we will bring those materials, actual samples of the materials, for everybody to, to have an opinion and tell us what is appropriate and what isn't.
Good, good, thank you. You had no more questions, Ms. Walton?
No.
All right, sure. Mr. Hibbs?
I appreciate that. I'm excited about this, as I know the entirety of our board is, as our district is, with these two projects on this property. We're getting many, many inquiries, and we can't have it fast enough, as Ms. Walton says. I mean, and Ms. Walton's son is an orchestra teacher, so...
Are you talking about the orchestra?
No, 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 but I, but you, no, I'm just saying, you know, if, if, if there's anybody excited about seeing this come to fruition is our Fine Arts Department. I know what you were mentioning and you were asking about in your initial comments with the HKS...
Familiarity?
...project with the new stadium. They're transitioning from the old brick to a all-Texas stone out front, everything made in Texas for, for that. I'm not big about incurring additional cost, so I'm going to, I'm not going to push, you know, as far as that goes, but, you know, if we can, you know, it looks like there's a transition from the old stadium to a nice Texas theme, and you've got that Texas Live area going to that, and we know that our ultimate goal is to be able to have regional competitions and such. So, I don't mind it being a separate standalone, because obviously, what you did with AT&amp;T Stadium is totally different. I mean, we're almost taking it from historical to space-age. So, you know, if we fall there in the middle, I'm okay with it, but, you know, you know, I, I'm very, very excited about this project, and I know that Ms. Walton, Mr. Hogg, and I think Dr. Rice and Ms. Ellins were all very instrumental at different parts. I was always hoping to be in on this, and I always seem to be out of town. So, I don't know that I want to instill your thunder from being able to make the motion on this, if, you know, if, but I do believe that we should have a motion go forward, so you want to make that?
Dr. Rice, I move that we move forward with the schematic design of our new Fine Arts Center as presented to us by HKS. You second it, John?
I'll second it.
All right, so there's a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Hibbs, to approve the schematic design. We do have some discussion, some lights indicated. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, President Rice. I love that we're keeping the trees and the green space. Aesthetically, there's a lot to really like about this. I think most of my questions are more practical in nature. So, on the presentation that we're looking at and also up there, I'm finding it a little difficult to distinguish the labels on each one of these little rooms. Can you just quickly take me through where are the bathrooms, and how many do we have, and how many people will they serve?
On the public side of the project, who I assume your question is geared towards, we have restroom facilities here in blue, and then again, up here in blue again. And these are planned by the codes. The codes determine, based on the occupancy of the space, how many fixtures you provide. And what we did is we took that number and we split it in half so that we know that the largest crowd of the concert hall can go to either side, and a smaller crowd in the theater is well-served by this section here. And now, these are repeated on the second floor, identical. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight fixtures total on the floor per sex, so that's 16 total fixtures.
Are there any family restrooms?
There are family restrooms, yes, ma'am. And there are student restrooms in the back as well.
Okay, so the, the number of facilities, I don't know how to be really specific about that, but the number that it services, both male and female and family, that's prescribed by if this building was totally maxed out with occupancy, if we had something going on in the studio theater, something in the concert hall, and then also still some classes going on or rehearsals in the dance studio or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am. He said 10 fixtures beyond the minimum count.
Okay, cool. And I'm assuming, I know this is way far down the line, but there's going to be sort of those little places where if people have infants, they can change their child, they won't have to put them on the floor?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The amount of storage outside the studio theater, can you talk me through... The amount of storage outside the studio theater, can you talk me through how much storage that is, and, and how that square footage was arrived at? Because-
That, yeah, I'd be happy to-
It doesn't look like a lot of storage space.
So, that is not the only storage room in, in the building. That particular room was arrived to by considering a extension, a thrust stage extension, to this proscenium opening. And this is a platform stage that would be brought in for special plays. So, the first four rows of the studio theater are not fixed seating, they can be moved out.
Okay.
And so, the, the platforms and the chairs would be stored here alternatively, depending on the use. We have additional storage spaces surrounding the concert hall up here, and there is additional storage room right there. So, there has been a lot of storage planned for different parts and portions of the building to make sure that things don't end up in the hallways.
Okay. And I guess, in speaking with our fine arts experts, we feel like we have enough space for, I guess, storing, if we were to be doing one-act play showcase there, a, a full three-act play, and then also storing the UIL block sort of sets, we feel like we have enough, and that it's adequately situated? Or would that be a really long haul from the storage by the concert hall, all the way down to the studio theater?
The adjacencies are strong.
Okay. And the, the width of the hallways, do we feel like they're adequate if you wanted to carry a, a sofa, or an organ, or something really unwieldy, big set pieces?
We have actually made sure that there is a clear, clearest possible path for a piano to be rolled in from a dock through this corridor and up into the concert hall, with the least amount of turns possible. And that is a 11-foot wide corridor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I am directionally challenged. I love natural light, but can you tell me which direction all of these windows are facing, and what kind of lighting we'll be get, getting at different times of the day?
Yes, ma'am. The majority of the windows are either north or east-facing, and that is all along the front face of this building. We have taken great care to not have very many west-facing openings. West-facing openings tend to get a lot of heat gain through them from afternoon sun. We have a large northwest-facing opening off of the back of the learning stair. But, if you recall on, I'm gonna go to the rendering, right there, we have created a screen system, vertical screen system, in front of the glass, that will block the direct west sunlight from piercing into that space. That also directs the view from inside to the north, more than it does to the west, which is a better view, because we have a lot of industrial buildings on the, on the west, so.
On, on all of these pictures, I see a lot of stairs. Can you talk to me about the accessibility for our disabled citizens?
Yeah, as, as we develop the site further, all the exits and entries are going to be provided accessible routes. There is a significant level change naturally, grade changes naturally on the site, from where the building is to where the street is, so we do have to traverse that. And therefore, we need steps, and we will provide ramps with equal access.
And will there be elevators to the second floor for balcony seating?
Yes, there are two elevators. And they are located, one is located right there, and the other one is right there.
Okay.
And then, we have a, a main stair, another main stair right there. So, there's two public stairs-
Okay.
...accessing the second floor as well.
So, there's a lot of natural light in the art gallery? I think usually, when you go see in particular paintings and that kind of thing, they usually don't have natural light in those same rooms, because the sunlight degrades the pigment of the paint. Is that a concern at all for our students displaying, or any professional artists that would like to be displayed there?
We actually had a, a pretty long conversations with Mr. Gwynne about the amount of natural light in the gallery. There actually is not as much as it would be perceived. The, the glass above the walls here is in reality recessed far, far back. I'm gonna go skip to one of the aerial views. You can see it right there. The glass is back here, and this is a solid roof. So, the gallery is underneath here. There is no direct light coming into the gallery from that roof. There are these three-slot windows, which are all north-facing. That means no direct sunlight will get into the gallery, which means no art will be exposed to direct sunlight. And those will have sun controls that, that they can be pulled down in case the gallery needs to be darkened.
Okay, cool. And all of the roof surfaces seem to be fairly flat from the renderings. Will there be any plan to channel water, or deal with snowfall, in the event that that ever randomly happens, which it does occasionally here?
They look flat, but they're actually sloped to drain roofs, so-
Okay.
They're not exactly flat.
And they'll, they'll drain thoughtfully and not directly onto our patrons-
Yes.
-where we're walking through a beautiful waterfall to go see a-
We've planned for numerous internal drains to sort of take that water away.
Okay. That might be all my questions. Give me just one second to make sure. Okay, so the, I can't remember what you called it, but the, the acoustical drapery that's going in, can you tell me a little bit about the life cycle of that-
Go ahead.
-and the maintenance of that?
So, this is a, a common equipment in a studio theater, and it is for variable acoustic, so it can be pulled open, depending on, on the livelihood that the space needs to have. The, you know, it is professional grade, so it won't need to be replaced often. And it is intended to go away, really, as, as the lighting of the space darkens out, you really won't really perceive that it's there. The intent is that beyond this level, what's above you won't really be very noticeable, based on how it'll be.
Okay. And what about cleaning it, de-dusting it, sort of making sure that it's not a health hazard, as far as mold and, and just collection of age with dust?
I think that'll have to be done very occasionally.
Okay. And, and I guess, like, are there people who can climb up that high? Is it accessible? Do we know that there are professionals that can do that?
There is a catwalk system that runs all the way around. So, if you see this window back here, this is a lighting booth. And so, behind these is a, a corridor, and then a catwalk that steps down and runs across the top of this. Then, there's a, a ladder that go up to the higher catwalks that come across.
Okay.
And this is very typical of theaters and, and studio theater and production spaces.
I've seen it, I've just never known what, what's the maintenance like on that. And in, just a comment, in all of the pictures that you guys are showing, the lighting just looks really nice, and I think lighting goes so far to set the ambiance and, and really make a space. So, thank you for the thoughtful renderings, and I really hope that when we see that come to life, that it's even better than what we see right here. Thank you so much for preserving as many of the trees as you can, particularly that really large one. I think it's, it's always a little sad when you see a brand-new building just sort of sitting there, and there, it's gonna take years for these little tiny twigs to, you know, blossom into great big trees. So, I think that was really thoughtful, and I think it's gonna add to the, the feeling that people will have when they come to this building. So, thank you for the, the thoughtful work by the committee, and for your hard work as well. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
So, I have just a, a couple of statements and questions. Great work. It's been, been a pleasure going through the, the evolutionary process of sketching to this full, now schematic design. One thing that we didn't really cover much tonight was the, the main intent and purpose, which is educating our kids. And there is great academic space behind the concert hall. It's, it's just, it's phenomenal. I really appreciate your work, and, and with our, our district staff working together to come up with what was really meeting the best needs of our students, and to enhance their experience and exposure here. So, I, I'm excited. I can't, can't wait. As, as has been said, just like everybody else, this is gonna be great. We can't wait for it. Just a couple of quick questions, very, very minor, maybe two into the weeds. One, on the staircase, I know we had a couple of different ideas, and, and this, the, the last one I saw, I thought there was a, a landing, so if we had some kind of pre-function event, or a separate event in that open space, that would serve as almost a podium type of, or stage area. So, on this design, it doesn't seem like that's there. So, can you tell me what that looks like now, if we're doing that?
It, it actually, you can see it in the floor plan here.
So, it still is there?
So, we do have it there.
Okay, okay.
And I think in the, in the watercolor-
It just flows.
-it kinda gets washed away-
Okay, okay.
-in, in the interpretation. But, but you are correct, there is a, a step that is-
Pardon the pun, yeah.
-acting as an IAS for a, so you can have a presentation.
Okay, very good. And this in no way affects the schematic design and the motion that's on the table. I was curious, the, the technology mark that you talked about, that I heard before tonight, with the ability to have that piano play with somebody playing it remotely, real-time, whether it's one of our students at one of our high schools, or junior highs, or somebody at Carnegie Hall, will there be any in that area where the piano is, will there be any kind of a video board? Or has that been thought of at all, so that they could actually be on video, and people could see, oh, that's a, that's a high school student that's doing that, and they're playing real-time here? Or is that kind of silly? Just a question.
We have actually planned for a, it's not showing in any of these views, for a video board in the pre-function space to facilitate the type of, you know, audio and visual presentation together.
Okay.
So-
Okay. Mr. Earnhardt, looks like he's really interested in coming up.
He's leaning forward.
Like, he wanted to say something towards that. So, I mean, you don't have to, but if you had something to say, please.
President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos. So, the Steinway Spireo technology is essentially 22nd-century player piano. All right, so, we will be able to have, on the, the concert hall, record our students performing, and then during the day, at 1:00, it could be elementary students, and you'd see their performance on the stage while the piano is playing their exact recorded music, down to the lightest touch. Also, there will be the ability to do remote, so in terms of, as you mentioned, a concert at Carnegie Hall could be playing right in our foyer as well. Think about the educational implications of that. Be able to have master classes and instruction from anywhere in the world for our students right here in the foyer of our new Fine Arts Center is, is pretty stunning. And, and we do need to thank the folks at Steinway &amp; Sons for partnering with us on this venture. We will be the first public institution to feature this technology in education for our students.
That's great, that's great. Very good. Well, thank you for that. And, yeah, like I said, I don't know if there's any value added to having a, a kind of video monitor of that. But, again, that's way down into the weeds. I don't see any further lights indicating further discussion, so there is a motion on the table to go ahead and approve the schematic design, so you all can keep on, on schedule and move on down the road.
Great, thank you.
So, with that, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next is the items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any trustees that have any items they wish to be withdrawn? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent. We'll be considering all the items that are listed on the agenda under consent. Ms. Powell, please share any bids with us.
President Rice, board members, Dr. Kavasos, there is one bid on the agenda this evening, and in that bid, we're recommending that all of the compliant submissions be awarded for approval. And then, in terms of donations, we have donations totaling $53,395 this evening for your consideration, and that brings our year-to-date total to $194,777.
And I, Spence already took it off. I was just noticing, oh, thank you, Spence, compared to last year at this time, $154,000. That's a significant increase. Thank you to everybody in the community for supporting. That's wonderful. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Powell. All right, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
Second, second?
Motion by Ms. Hudson, second by Ms. Walton. Go ahead, hold on. Okay, go ahead, please vote. Consent passes. All right. Moving on, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards. I think we move right on now to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to share some information about our schools and our school districts. So, our All-Pro Dads Day, Draft Day, was in early September, and it's a second year in a row to have this All-Pro Dads and encourage participation in monthly activities with dads with their, their children. So, this is a father engagement program with our Community Engagement and Parental Involvement Program with Aaron Perales. So, had a great time with Draft Day and these wonderful, wonderful fathers who were there to support their, their kids and be involved in our schools. Our annual Operation Graduation Walk, where students were asked to re-enroll and come back to school, was held in mid-September, and I want to sincerely thank all the individuals who participated and volunteered to do that, and thank our dropout prevention department for continuing to organize this and doing a great job. And the lives that we touch, just by this event alone, is really significant, and it really adds a context to, to a lot of the work that we're doing. We had great attendance at our pastoral luncheon this year. The group was always eager to hear about the updates with our school district. We had some of the faith-based leaders presenting also that, at that luncheon. And so, we're, we're very fortunate to have strong support by our faith-based community here in Arlington. Had a chance to stop by McNutt Elementary, and the reason I highlight this campus visit is because they are one of our pilot schools for the active learning cycle that you've heard of before. And they were in full force in the implementation of that active learning cycle. And I want to thank the teachers in particular for embracing that, but also making it come to reality. It's one thing to, to hear about the active learning cycle and to understand the, the design behind it, it's another thing to actually see it in implementation. So, I, I thank the teachers there at McNutt, and all the pilot schools as well for early adopting the active learning cycle. The Arlington-Manesville area YMCA continues to support our students through generous backpack donations. We had this donation from our YMCA, and so, Dr. V. and I were able to accept some backpacks on behalf of our school districts as part of their back-to-school drive. So, I want to sincerely thank the Y. for all that they do, and Aaron Perales for also being involved, heavily involved in the, in the Y. as a volunteer. Last week, we honored our first Teachers of the Month for 1718, and I want to congratulate also our Department Employee of the Month. We added a Department Employee of the Month this year. Andrea Traubridge from Bergen Elementary, Patrick Hobbold from Bailey Junior High, Billy Skinner from Lamar, and Lakeisha Rogers from the Warehouse Department. We appreciate their work. This is a, a small gesture, but it's very meaningful when we go out to the schools and honor our teachers, and now our Department Employee of the Month. Just if anybody is keeping track, this Facebook activity and Twitter activity got the most ever so far with our teachers online, and so, that was, that was very interesting, that they, the videos, et cetera, were just the most ever traffic we've had. It's an honor to have and recognize our teachers that do such an exceptional work every day. Our partnership with Dallas Cowboys and Fuel Up to Play 60 and Dairy Max continues to grow. This is a picture of students at Ellis Elementary. The district was awarded a $10,000 NFL Hometown Grant to expand our partnership to even more schools. So, I want to thank, obviously, the Dallas Cowboys and our teachers and our coaches at the elementary level as well for their support of the Fuel Up to Play 60. Finally, the 35th Annual Dean Corey Marching Extravaganza was Monday night, bringing together 10 of our junior highs and all six of our high school marching bands for their performances. And Fine Arts continues to grow, thanks to the effort of many, many people, including our Bond 2014 initiatives. This was an exceptional event, just like it is every year, to display the talent and the unity of our Fine Arts Department through band, was just really a, a exceptional activity. And I want to wish good luck to our bands as the UIL season begins, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Great things going on. Are there any school board members that have a report? Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Reich. I do want to mention that I was able to speak to the PTA council, overall council, and what a tremendous job they're doing for our community, for our district. I mentioned and brought a strong thank you from our board, but these individuals are really making huge advancements on their campuses in support of our faculty and staff, and then also being able to be that liaison between the parents and our teachers. And I just wanted to, again, just say that I'm very, very thankful for the job that the PTA does in our district. And I'm hearing that we even have a new PTA that will take an effect at Pete's Elementary. And this is something that I know as a board, we support fully, and we want to see it continue to grow. And again, just a hearty thank you to each and every one of our parents that involves themselves not only in their own students' life, but to impact the 63,000 students, as you mentioned before, because each one of them, that touch by a PTA on that school can do great things.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mrs. Walton? Sorry, yeah?
I just want to report, I had the privilege of attending the Asian, Arlington Asian Chamber of Commerce event on Saturday, formerly known as the A-Gro Festival. It was great fun. Aaron Peralis was there, as Aaron is everywhere, you know, with some of the health booths and so forth. He was promoting our school district and what's good for kids. The most exciting thing is where this event was held is directly across the street from our new Career Tech Center, and there was much enthusiasm and much interest and curiosity about that. So, I hope that we can do some things to involve our Asian neighbors in Arlington here in that. They are pretty excited about it. And then, that evening, thank you, Education Foundation. We had, they had their fundraiser. It was very well-attended, and looks like they're going to be able to give grants to lots of teachers for programs for lots of kiddos. So, that was a real full and fun day. Thank you.
Thank you, indeed, indeed. Mr. Chapa?
I was just going to mention the Tailgate event as well, and I was there Saturday, had a great time. The Education Foundation is doing phenomenal. They've come a long way in a very short amount of time. They set a record, $200,000 almost raised on Saturday night. In their history, this year, they surpassed the $2 million in giving mark. And if they're raising $200,000 on one night on Saturday, you get an impression of how quickly that, they've made progress on that front, and gave to the district this year over $400,000. So, thank you to the AISD Education Foundation for supporting our classroom teachers and things that sometimes our budget doesn't always cover. And then, the next thing I'd like to mention is I saw where we had eight high school students that were named National Merit semifinalists. It's just going to show that, you know, we have some phenomenal students who can compete with the best and brightest in the country, and very proud of them for what they've achieved.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Yeah, lots of great things going on in our district. The only thing that I didn't hear mentioned that I was a part of was being able to represent the board and the district at a groundbreaking ceremony for a Miracle League pavilion expansion at Random Mill Park. It's very, very well-needed. That program is widely supported by the Texas Rangers and the city of Arlington, and, boy, those children, they're just having a great time on that field. And this expansion was for a pavilion because it's so popular, they just don't have enough space for people coming out to see, and the parents and the families, et cetera. So, it's going to be great. So, it was a privilege to be out there. With that, I was not able to get over to the Asian Chamber of Commerce Festival. So, thank you, Ms. Walton, for being there. So, with that stated, I don't see any more lights indicating further reports, so I will say, Mr. Acting Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Quick knife force, I mean, absolutely not. I mean, we were able to zip right through it tonight.
Very good. All right, and, yes, it is 8:28, and although people in the audience can go home, we will now move to a closed meeting for sections of Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and according with the Open Meetings Act to go over goals and evaluation. And we will not be making any decisions there, but we do have work to do, so thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned. Sorry, tech is not adjourned. We're only going to close. Thank you, Dennis.